I have someone to be prepared, Councilman Wright.
Let us bow here and pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come to you and say thank you. Thank you, God, for watching over us, guiding us, decisions that we have to make as a council in this great city. Tonight, God, we have to make decisions and choices going forward for the betterment, the future of our city. Help us to make those decisions heartfelt, knowledgeable, and fair. Bless us now as we go forward in this meeting. Keep us united as one strong city. We pray these prayers in Jesus' name.
In Jesus' name.
All right, Council, I have 3.0, the pledge of allegiance.
A allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving forward, Council, I have 4.0, the approval of the agenda committee for some of the names of agenda.
So be it.
It's a motion by Councilmember Wright, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approval of the agenda, throw hands. All right, Councilmember Ingram. All right, Madam Clerk, that's the motion, Carrie.
I'd like to say something green.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
I have your tip on the cloud.
Okay, all right, Madam 4 Tim, your vote? Madam 4 Tim Jensen, can you hear me?
Green, green.
All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, both voting. Out of 5.01, the appointment of City Council District 3 candidate discussion. So, Council, as we discussed, we have a number of candidates who have applied up through the deadline, which is, I think, last Friday, 12:00, 12:00 midnight. And tonight, the council will hear from each candidate. The format, the full format was to have each potential applicant speak for a maximum of three minutes, and then open the floor for the council members to ask questions, and then we will use the same format for all of the candidates. So with that, I'll turn it over to the manager, and then we will get our first applicant. Councilmember Ingram, you have something?
Yes, sir, I have two questions. The first question is, and I sent an email about this last weekend today. The first question is, is there a potential that there can be some public input surrounding this appointment? And given that, I recognize it would need to delay the appointment, but I do believe, based off the research that I have done, any appointment that has been made to a city council, Fayetteville City Council, there has been an opportunity for a public input. And I remember, I think, the last one, I think you, Mayor Colvin, kind of, I think, headed up that one. But I think, I'm just, I would like to show interest in a public input. I don't know if that needs to be a vote, but I also have another item after we discuss this one.
As it relates to public forum, I think that being in council's decision will be at the next council meeting, we could schedule a public forum at the end of that agenda to allow public input. So I would certainly be open and welcome that suggestion. Council, any?
So I just want to make sure I understand what you just, so that would mean we're only hearing the appoint of the candidates tonight. We're not voting on them, if that's the case, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and my second, my second part piece is, I'd like to make, I guess, I don't know if it needs to be in the form of a motion. I think Madam Attorney can help me with this, but I think I would like, well, what I would like to do is I'd like to make a motion that we clearly identify the appointment process of how we will draw the names, however that goes, and we all vote that we understand what this appointment process will be.
Interesting, clarify your question a little bit, I'm not sure I understand.
That, that was a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we, we clearly identify what the appointment process, when it comes down to voting for the candidate, will be, and that we all vote that we understand what that process will be, so that when we get, when we get that, when we come back to vote on this candidate, there's no confusion on what, how the process will be done.
Okay, if I understand your question, you're speaking of next Monday's process that you want clarification as to how that is. What are, what are you asking me to vote on?
So, for instance, that, we just came out of the instance where we were, I guess, we were at health state with, with a particular appointment, and so what I'm asking directly is that we clearly identify the candidate appointment process and how, which we will vote on it. For example, if we are all okay with someone throwing a name out and taking a vote, then I just would like for that process to be documented and all of us to vote on that we understand the process, because when it comes down to making appointments, there seems to always be some confusion behind what the process look.
So, Council, any, any input on what discussion? I do, I do agree that we should all understand clearly the process before we do it. Just, maybe, a suggestion, maybe, Manager, if you could, you all could tell us what process we used the last time we had to replace a council member? That could be one option or any other option that the council wanted to utilize. Any input from that, Mr. Hurd?
There are any number of ways, Mayor, that y'all can choose to do this. It could be that you would start by taking nominations from the floor, and that you could say, who would you like to nominate? And then whittle it down to process of elimination, you know, try to get to your top three, and then vote. Or it can be just something as simple as I would propose that we put this person forward, get a second, take a vote, and if there's a majority of people who vote for that candidate, then that person is appointed. You can do it more elaborately again, you could say, let's narrow it down to two, and then discuss it. At the last time, I think it was, um... City Attorney has some.
May I believe, when you did the process to replace former council member Williams, you just took the names in order?
That's where I was headed.
You know, that person, whatever, till you got someone who had a majority out of vote.
Because, Mayor, that somewhat abnormal process, okay, we go down the list.
So you're saying, once you vote, you vote, you only have one vote per council?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, any other input? All right, so we'll, we'll make sure we articulate the rules clearly at the beginning of the meeting, so that all council members have a comprehensive list of steps. So thank you for that.
And, Mr. Mayor, and just to go back to my first point, Madam Attorney, there, do we need to establish a public hearing to do public notice for next week for public input? Or just to automatically know that we are interested in that?
This question is, the process of scheduling a public hearing, we have to make the announcement for the agenda next week to list the public hearing as part of it, right?
You could, or next week is also your public forum, so people can sign up to speak during the public forum, recognizing that depending on how many speakers you have, you may need to extend the time for the public forum.
And that is exactly why I asked for the public hearing, because I know we have time constraints on our public forum.
Okay, I think we can work around that.
We have three members signed up already for public forum, but I think the intent then is, is that following tonight, Ms. Jody Phelps, you see in the back, is our new Director of Communications, will work with the Clerk's Office to notify the media that the council, as part of your public forum, as a separate public hearing, would, would be welcoming public comment on all, is it 11? 11 names for anyone that would choose to give it next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Councilmember Ingram. So, Mr. Hurd, you have a list, I know you give to us, we have a list of candidates as they come in, by after order?
Yes, it's, um, as well as by tab in your notebook.
Let me ask you a question. So, just trying to understand the process of public hearing versus, you got, do people have three minutes, or it would be?
Three, would be my recommendation.
I'm sorry?
At the public forum, people are limited to three minutes.
Three minutes, that's what it's going to be at public forums? I'm just trying to keep that clear.
If that's Council's wish, yes, you can do it in public forum or public hearing, yes.
Okay, so, as the word go out for public hearing, you got 11 people that are lobbying for this position based upon the public input. You may have 20 people that's speaking on behalf of one of the candidates, and the others may not have, you know, that many people speaking on their behalf, which, you know, in my mind, based on, you know, giving public knowledge of where people stand versus these candidates, would that be a fair assessment of, of each one of those 11 people, if more comes than the others? Or is that something that, it's on them to have as many? So if we can have up to 50 people speaking for three minutes, what we're going to limit it to? What we usually limit it to, or how we gonna work that out?
Yeah, I think we, we use, as they said, public forum has three minutes per. Public hearings have a, have, unless it's a special use, have a set amount of time. So you may have some people who are all supporting one that may not use the four, three minutes. So I think we can work the logistics out.
Right.
I just think the important part is to have an opportunity for public input.
Absolutely, and see, what I don't, I don't want to happen is, we run out of time, and then you have people that didn't have an opportunity to speak.
Well, we'd like to probably try to accommodate everybody within reason, even if we have a lot of speakers, we may have to limit.
Limit the time per. Okay, that's right.
And Mayor, we can even go one step further in that, again, tomorrow, we can say that anyone that wishes to provide feedback on any of their names could submit that in writing to the City Clerk's Office with that contact information, but they would need to contact the Clerk's Office to sign up as well, so we can, we can do that.
All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, sir, um, I... Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, so I was, um... And I, and I go back to, do we need to vote on this if we're going to just establish a public hearing or public forum? Because what I've recognized is, in most recent council amendments or meetings where we've had our public forums, there have been a lot of people to call in. And if we have caught people, people calling in at a high number just to talk about regular, you know, city business and concerns, I wouldn't want to infringe on their time as well, which is why I was thinking it needed to be separate.
Okay, so I think there's a consensus based on feedback, Council, to do it. Mr. Manager, can you come back with the consensus as to?
Unless there is any heartburn, we'll just advertise it as a separate public hearing right after the public forum.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right, all right, Council, we do have quite a few people who sacrificed that time tonight, so I wanted to get to candidates right this time. If you all can, ask Mr. Antonio Jones, come in. Jones, how are you? Can you come to the podium? Appreciate you joining us tonight. The format of tonight's meeting, each candidate will have three minutes to kind of talk about themselves and why did you, you would like to represent District 3. At the end of your comments, we'll open the floor for one question per council member they choose to add in, and then we'll, we'll conclude. So the council's job tonight was to meet each of you all, talk to you, ask questions, and make a formal decision scheduled for the 13th, which is next month. So I'll give you the floor, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to have this time, members of the council, I appreciate that. I believe what I placed on paper speaks for itself, so I want to speak to some intangibles that the paper may can't convey appropriately. First, I want to make it known, I am not here to enhance a resume, I am not here to speak upon a who's who. I sincerely have a desire to serve people, and it's part of the calling in my particular life, like the strain coming right now. But at any rate, I believe I am the best candidate for this particular position for several reasons, one of which I have proven leadership. One, I am a certified public manager on the national level, which basically means I am, I have the skill set to, to run a department up to a municipality. In addition to that, I am a Six Sigma Blackmail. It doesn't have anything to do with martial arts or anything of that nature. It basically has to do with a specific skill set that allows us to make processes lean, to make processes more efficient. Next, I, I believe that I have a proven track record of being a leader. I was the youngest regional supervisor with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Communicative Disease Section, where I oversaw three of the state's seven regions. And at that particular time, I was tasked with creating a viable relationship with Fort Bragg and other military bases, which time I did that, which is, they are still viable today. Along that same line, I believe, what speaks to the leadership that I have, I was chosen as one of four speakers at a conference in Belgium, at SHAPE, NATO, or SHAPE is what we call it, for the Garrison Benelux Leadership Conference there, where I was charged to speak to military families, civilians, in regards to their mental struggles that they have with being overseas, as well as some of the domestic terrorism that was going on at that particular time. Next, I believe that I am the best candidate for this particular position, simply because I have an extensive history of working with diverse populations. I have a certificate in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And also, my time during, with the State Epidemiology Department, I was actually fortunate to, to speak with and work with individuals that literally had nothing to multimillionaires. So I know how to, 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 to work within any population. Lastly, I would like to speak to my community involvement. I am extremely involved in my communities. I've been here for my entire life. Most recently, I was on the steering committee for the Build a Better Block from Murchison Road, in which I served as a community liaison to bring people together to give a snapshot of what that particular corridor could look like with increased walkability and with, excuse me, and with increased bike lanes. So lastly, I just want to let you know, I should be this particular candidate simply because I possess an appropriate balance between skill set and passion, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you, there. Jones, Councilman here has a question.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jones, how are you?
Doing well, thank you.
If you are not appointed for this vacancy, will you apply for, during, during the following period, will you apply for City Council for District 3 seat?
Yes, I definitely will, with full support of my long-lived Realty Association.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I did a question for you, Jones. So each year, the council has a strategic planning retreat, where we develop the goals of the City Council based on that council's vision. How would this strategic plan play into your, your governance, your decision-making, if you were a newly elected member or appointed?
I believe it, it should be out of your decisions. It should got it because, look, as you're, whenever you speak of strategic planning, it's just that, and I think too many times, not we per se, who's here, just me in general, sometimes we can deviate from that and get on personal agendas and things of that nature. And I think that strategic planning retreat with, with a correct agenda, what's on, what we need to work on, I think it would allow us to stay focused, and as far as for me, it would help streamline the process and really basically have all of us to be about our business while we're there.
Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Jones. If you were selected to sit on council during this time, what would be your number one goal, councilperson? If you wasn't selected by this, and you ran as a councilperson as you wanted, you sat on the council, what would be that goal for Fayetteville? I would say one of the top priorities would definitely be the homeless issue that we have here, and with youth delinquency. I, I know there's a lot of things that have and are continuing to go on within our community, some of which we do have some control over with having specific programs and certain strategies in place. And so I would really look at some very creative ways, I know it's cliche as to say out of the box, but for lack of a better word, speaking, thinking outside of the box, looking at other models, things of that nature, that we possibly could model here, of course, with certain caveats being specific to the city.
Council, any other questions for, uh, Jones? Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for joining us this evening. As it relates to the city's infrastructure and stormwater, what, what is your view, and what are some ways, if you were to be appointed, and I recognize that you have intentions to run, what are some of your interests to help better, as a body, our infrastructure and stormwater issues and infrastructure issues within District 3 and the city of Fayetteville?
I believe that we first and foremost get back to something very basic, which is called accountability to our, not only to our businesses, but also to our citizens. Part of that, as it relates to the citizens, would be to educate the citizens in regards to what to do, what not to do. And I think even with that, we have to be a little creative, as sometimes just talking about stormwater is boring to the, to the average, maybe boring to the average citizen. And so I would work with our specific departments within, definitely our local health department. I know that's a county organization, but I believe there's, there's some, some room there to work with them in regard to what can be done, in regards to how we're building, how certain things are set in place.
Okay, and then my next question is?
Councilmember Ingram, we have, we have one question tonight.
Oh, my apologies, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Jones? Council, Councilmember Kess?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Jones. One of the questions that I have is about your schedule or balancing the schedule. If you are appointed, can you just elaborate on that just a little bit on, because normally it's not just a Monday, it may be a special meeting, so how would you balance that schedule out?
Thank you so much for asking that question. I, I believe, again, this, this is serving people as a calling, and so as such, I have chosen a profession after leaving the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services in the form of being a broker, a real estate broker, so that I could have the time that I need, I could have the flexibility. I have no other obligations aside from my, my serving on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with the county, aside from that, but I see no reason why I would have any reason, meaning that demands of this job at all.
Mr. Jones, how important is it to have a, not party, but a consistent voting record in terms of local, national, regional elections?
I think it's very important because, as O'Addy says, we practice what we preach. And I think as a voting citizen, whether you're in office or not in office, you're exercising a right that many overlook. And I believe if we, as, speaking of myself, I, if I was elected, chosen for this particular position as a council member, it would be very, very important for me to model the exact behavior that I would want from the community, while tying it to specific results, tying it to specific inquiries, concerns, to let them know that while we have a voice, behind that voice, there also needs to be a vote to support what your specific village is.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here this afternoon, Mr. Jones. My question is, you mentioned you want to run for council, if you don't make it through this, run around. My question is, because I, I feel that when we work in a community, or, you know, you have a passion for certain things, we need to get back to the community, to get, you know, have that relationship with people in the community. When was the last time you've been to a community, Washington, District 3, or have you?
Yes, they're, they're on the telephone, and so I've, it's been probably three months since I've done that. But what I do, I'm very active in my particular community, if I can give you 30 seconds of an example of that, literally, cutting my grass in my yard, two vehicles come by and shooting at each other, and turned down the car to the side of my home, and I have to go. I know that there's elderly individuals there, there's a, there's a single parent, there were children there. And so I, I, I'm, I'm saying that to say this, I'm constantly engaging within the community. For instance, earlier this year, there was some concerns that the citizens in that particular area had for a road, for some road damage, and so I was instrumental in getting that particular situation taken care of.
Councilmember Banks, well, any other questions for Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I do understand that we are only able to ask one question, but I do think a question that has not come up is about our...
Councilmember Ingram, to be fair, you set the rules at the beginning of the meeting, we have other applicants, so we have to give them time too, so I apologize for that. Maybe you can send that question to the clerk, and she can get it to Mr. Jones as well. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you all for your time.
Madam Clerk, if you can, please call Ms. Cynthia Swenson.
Madam Clerk, if you can, please call Ms. Cynthia Swenson-Lakes.
Evening, Ms. Swenson-Lakes. You come to the podium, please.
Okay.
How you doing?
I'm doing well. I hope everybody makes this.
Well, welcome. We appreciate you joining us tonight. And if you are comfortable with it, can you move me closer so we can kind of hear?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so the format tonight, we provided equal time for each applicant to introduce themselves and what it is that prompted you to seek this position. At the conclusion of your remarks, the council will be awarded one question apiece if you choose to ask, and we'll go from there. So, Lord George.
All right. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name is Cynthia Swenson-Lakes, and I'm a native of Fayetteville. I've been here all my life, even though I've left for 30 years. I've been here all my life, and I believe in there's no place like home. When I moved back, I was gone for about 30 years. I graduated from Cherry Sanford High School, by the way. I'm a New Bold Product, New Bold Elementary School on Fayetteville State Campus, and I went to Washington Drive. My parents were military, so we were a military family. Let's see, when I came back in 20, moved back in 2019 to take care of my aunt, you know, I started noticing the community that we lived in. I moved here, built my house next door to her to take care of her in Broaddale. The way I started getting involved with my citizens in my community was I needed to take care of my aunt while I was living in Durham. So I reached out to all the neighbors around her until I could get here to be with her. So that's when I started learning about all of the changes in Fayetteville that I felt like needed a little attention. Don't get me wrong, I love the city. I am Fayetteville native. I'm proud of what you all have accomplished over the past years. I love the ballpark. Oh, my God, I love going downtown to the museum, Special Forces, as my dad was retired Special Forces. I love this city. I find myself invited trying to get my friends to move to my city. So as things moved along, I became a Fayetteville City Ambassador in the Merchis and Choice. So as I got into Merchis and Choice, I'm saying to myself, wow, this is great. This is exactly what my purpose is. Because I already knew the neighbors. I already know the neighbors in Seabrook Hills in Apple's Park. I have friends all across the area because I grew up in the area. I remember, you know, I guess we made a book school. I don't know, we missed the bus to walk to Washington Drive. I remember walking downtown to Hay Street when, you know, it was different and just playing around and having fun. So with all of these thoughts and ideas, I see my community, especially Merchis and Row, not being as prosperous as I feel like it could be. So I would like to step up, meet the people where they are, and try to communicate that to this body so that we can make a difference in this shit.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Council, I do have a question for you, same one posed previously. Every council meets to develop a strategic plan and to the roadmap for decision-making for the next two years. How, when you're governance, if you're chosen for District 3 position, how do you view this city's strategic plan and making the decision?
Well, I did review what you all have, and I support it. I also applaud it because their Merchis and Choice initiative is laid out in your strategic plan for 2022. And your core values, oh, my goodness. You know, I'm retired state government. This is the first time I've been in a suit since I retired in 19. And I just feel like I'm right back at home, you know, with core values. We all have core values in state government. I love your acronym, RESPECT. I think it meets the requirements. And, but I really feel like talking to the citizens. I don't know if they get that. And I talk a lot, so I'm always cut off a lot. But, you know, I don't know if they get that. But, you know, I feel like I could be a person that can take those values to just a common neighbor.
Councilor Rafferty.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Just one question. If you are blessed to hold this position, what would be your number-one priority coming forward as a councilperson?
My number-one priority would be to be a voice for the Merchis and Choice. I'm sorry, I'm harping on that, but that is near and dear to my heart. That is, the people are my passion. And I just think that Merchis and Initiative, you know, really, we have really gotten a lot of people involved so far. I'm looking forward to working with that program through the next year and, you know, bringing that news to the council. I know you all have respective districts, but Merchis and Choice is, you know, down in the middle of 4 and 3. And I think it would be a great improvement for Merchis and Row. So that would be, you know, a priority. You know, along with, I live off Jasper Street, so that's a pet peeve of mine. You know, I would like to, you know, spend some time with anybody, somebody, to try to get a beautiful patient in that. So, you know, it's a process, I understand it. But I would say that would be my first.
Councilor, any questions for Ms. Lee? Councilmember Kessin.
Yes, Ms. Lee, I just have one question.
Yes.
With the appointments tonight, outside of that, are you looking to run for the district seat with the next election?
I hope so. I have a passion for what I do. And I think I could, you know, bring a different perspective. You know, as I've not thought, for example, I've already had a community conversation at my home with just neighbors. And people are already calling me before I came today. Tiffany Pines, where my paparazzi lady called and said, you know, pick up your order, you know. You wouldn't believe it, last night I heard five gunshot shots. It woke me up. So I do, I think I would. Thank you. Thanks for asking.
Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mrs. Leaks. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Can you share with me your views on the city's current crime rate, shortage of police officers? In addition to, I know you mentioned you live off of Jasper Street. I'm very familiar with that area. Your views or priorities surrounding the district's infrastructure?
As far as infrastructure is concerned, you know, we do need speed bumps in several areas, I've noticed just from just looking. And paying roads, I've noticed that the city has paid a few in our district and put the bike, the bike trails, which is very nice. As far, the first part of your question was police.
The city's crime rate and shortage of police officers.
Yeah, I do know, I feel, you know, I haven't looked at, you know, the police, how many positions we have for the city. But I feel, just living in my community, there is a shortage. I do feel there is a shortage. The crime rate is, I mean, even I hear gunshots where I live. So I do, I hear gunshots where I live. I can hear on Fayetteville State's campus, when the siren goes off, where the students are warned about something happening. I E, a couple of years ago, you remember a gentleman broke into somebody's apartment over the University of Fayetteville. I don't remember all the details. But that was the first time that I realized that my area, there are some issues in my area. And, you know, and as I have talked to people, I encourage them to call 911 Youth Services. And I think there is an issue with some people not realizing how to use our services. I mean, the city services are here for you as a citizen to use. So I know we have a higher rate in our community, in District 3 than we'd like, just from speaking to neighbors. Not even reading the paper, but that's something that I hope to work on.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram. Any other questions for, no, I'm sorry?
I said, "Thank you."
Let me add this to, Councilmember Ingram. I think the Neighborhood Community Neighborhood Watch is a very, very important program that can be used for those services to be introduced to people who are not aware of them. And I'm involved in that as well in my community. I absolutely love it. And, but I don't think, I think we could use it better for the services and the purpose of the Neighborhood Watch more so than the way it's being used. So perhaps there isn't enough Neighborhood Watch programs established in 3 and 4. We have one in 3. I'm not sure about the other. We have one in Broaddale, but the other, like Tiffany Pines and different places like that, Hill of Dale West in our district. I'm not really sure. I spoke with a couple of people and they said, I think we have one, but I'm not really sure who's running it. So there's some investigations that I plan to pursue.
Thank you, Mrs. Leaks.
All right, Councilor, any questions for Ms. Lee? All right, Ms. Lee, thank you. Council, tonight is just the interview portion. The goal is to make the decision at next council meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you, and thank you for having me. You have a wonderful night.
All right, you too. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, and Councilmember Ingram, I remind you, let's try to do the single questions just to be fair with each candidate, if you should. Madam Clerk, if you can call Mr. Kessin or Ms. Lamore Ayerby?
Lamore Ayerby.
Evening, sir.
Good afternoon. Good evening.
All right, Ms. Ayerby, thank you for joining us. The format tonight is a little, a lot, 3 minutes for you to kind of introduce yourself and whatever priorities or what drove you to apply for this position in District 3. And then we'll open up for a single question from individual councilmembers if they choose. Lord George, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Bill Ayerby, and I am seeking the appointment for District 3 Councilman. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge the reason that we're all here. We're left in District 3 with the resignation of former councilmember Waddell. Regardless of public opinion or politics, I would like to publicly thank her for her 4 years of service to the city of Fayetteville and the residents of District 3. Unfortunately, we have to move on, and I'm ready to fill this important role. A little background about me. I came to Fayetteville in early 1991 as a young soldier on Fort Bragg. When I was honorably discharged in 1995, I was introduced to this very eclectic, ever-changing city. For example, as a lifelong violinist, I never even knew that Fayetteville had a professional symphony orchestra. Through that symphony, I met some incredible people who helped me start up my teaching studio. And before I knew it, I was a sought-after violinist in Fayetteville and the surrounding areas. I've taught music in the public schools and privately for 26 years. I've also lived most of my life on stage, which has enabled me to meet thousands of people from all walks of life. You might ask, what makes you qualified for this position? You obviously know music, but what does that have to do with politics? And I'll tell you that music brings people together, all types of people, all types of music. My degree, however, is in political science, and I'm positive that I'd be an asset to this council. Although I recognize that I'm not perfect, I possess honesty and integrity. I'm an ethical, moral man who is not afraid to make the tough decisions and address difficult issues that arise in our community. There are a lot of issues affecting District 3 right now. And although I don't have time to address them all, please know that as a resident of my district for over 20 years, I've experienced many situations, some pleasant, some not so pleasant. I'm trying to fight for equality of life, connectivity between the residents of the city government, and peace and safety in our community. Fayetteville has grown incredibly in the past 25 years and needs to continue. I believe that I can help the city facilitate that growth through calm and focused leadership and unbiased decision-making capabilities. Thank you for considering it, so we have to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks so much, sir. I have a question for you. So your governance, if you're chosen to represent District 3, how will the city's strategic plan govern your decision-making?
Oh, the strategic plan? Govern, I would be, well, I've... I haven't gone through the entire plan. I've been focused on learning what is going on around me, within my district. And I know that over the course of the next few months, I am going to, I'll get abreast of absolutely everything very quickly. There were some issues that I was personally focused on based on public safety that has affected my community.
Thank you so much. Councilor Davis.
Since you're focused on public safety, what are one or two things you believe the city must do in response to the public safety focus you're in?
I think a lot of, a lot of it comes down to getting individual, I mean, community leaders inside some of these communities to have a little bit more respect. You know, respect of the police is primary. And I've had some, I've had some issues. I had two situations where I had a gun pulled on me. You know, well-dressed in the middle of the day, once in the food line parking lot, another when I was dropping off music in a neighborhood office, in a neighborhood drive, nonchalant in the afternoons. And I've always handled a bit of diffuse situations, but it's getting scary. And I think we unfortunately need more police, but we're having problems getting this. You know, I think a lot of people are afraid to apply.
We deserve that answer to your question. Councilman Herr?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, sir, for coming down and applying. How do you feel the importance? How much do you feel that the importance is for someone that's, that is applying for this seat or seeking office? Tell me the importance that you think that he or she should be in voting in the regular municipality within the community that they're seeking. But of course, of, of course, the, the national election, but especially, especially in your local election, how important is it that a person that is seeking office vote regularly, which means that they are involved with what's going on?
I understand, and I am guilty of it. And I will tell you why. I, I looked at the, the voting records of our district. We had, our last election, we had 10.6% that turned out. I like to make educated decisions. If I'm, I'm not going to vote just for the, the sake of voting if I haven't been able to do my research and see what people, what a certain candidate stands for. Now, personally, I've never met Tisha Waddell. And, you know, I've been in District Three for over 20 years. And the other thing is that I polled my, I live in Pleasantakers. I actually polled my neighborhood the other day. 9% of people didn't even know they lived in District Three. Others just don't get involved, there isn't. I don't think there's enough advertisement, and it's, it's hard for people to, to know exactly when these elections are. It, and it's unfortunate, but I think that there might be, I think every, all of us have to do a better job in terms of advertising what's going on, not just, you know, social media, but it's, it's really pounding the pavement. That's what I'm looking to do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilor Wright?
Thank you. What would be your number one priority if you sit in the seat of council to get done, I would say, within the first 12 to 18 months, sir?
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot going on. Lately, the problems that I've been having on, on my section of town, it's infrastructure. The 295 corridor, the entrances on and off McArthur Road, there've been multiple traffic accidents there, you know. And because of the neighborhood, College Lakes, and coming off of Grossville Road and Stacey Weaver, those three combined at 5:00 in the afternoon, it's just, yeah, I, I would, I would try to get that taken care of because we're, we're just experiencing a ton of congestion and, you know. So I think traffic safety through that would, would ease a lot. And I think that could be done in the first 12 to 18 months.
All right, Councilman, Councilman Kisp?
Yes, thank you, thank you for being here this evening. One of the questions I've had is, you listed that you're employed by the Federal School of History, or Music, I'm sorry. How would you do a work balance if appointed to this position? Would that affect your schedule, or how would that work?
No, right now, I make my own schedule with the Fayetteville School. They fully support my run. I spoke to the head, Dr. Castillo, today. He said, "Whatever you need." And, and my private student, I have a private violin studio as well, which I can always, you know, obviously Mondays would be, you know, off the table, but I, I don't see any problems with me maintaining my work schedule because I can, I can change it whenever I need to.
Councilman Maynor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I have you first pronounce your last name for me? Because I do not want to mess it up.
That's all right, it's Iyerby.
Iyerby, thank you, Mr. Iyerby, for being here with tonight. Very glad that you spoke about the infrastructure, as that has been the question that I've been very concerned about asked this evening. You talked about traffic safety, 295. Can you talk about, talk to me about, does that, does that also include sidewalks within that for pedestrians and any, our, any accessible community?
Absolutely. Because right on that corner of Stacey Weaver and McArthur, we have sidewalks right from the library. And, you know, I, I walk to College, to College Lakes Park on a biweekly basis, you know, well, every, every other day or so. And sidewalks are great. You make that a left, and there's, there's not much there. So, you know, obviously, we're walking up to the, you know, the neighborhoods that, that come right off 9, 295, I would think probably need some traffic signals, some warning lights, something for, to let people slow down. But sidewalks definitely, I think, you know, just to, to be able to walk to the food line and, and the Family Dollar and everything that surround the area. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, sir, it does, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for being here this afternoon. One of my questions is, as it relates to community involvement, I know you mentioned that you've been a resident in District Three for over about 20 years, you said?
Yes.
You hadn't met previous council member Waddell, is that correct?
I have not.
You said you hadn't met, okay, okay, so how involved are you in the community?
Well, I have, it depends on where District Three and District One are, you know, right there. I have a lot of, I, I go to Singlis, and See, Temple Church. I also have a lot of friends at Northwood Temple. But within my district, I haven't really, other than my neighborhood, and we have a small community watch program. And we'll be all, like I was telling Councilman Herr, you know, we kind of police our own within that community, within our neighborhood. But I haven't had a ton of community involvement in, in and around. And that's one of those things that I look forward to, to doing, you know, to attending more community watch meetings and introducing myself. I'm really looking forward to the next few months, regardless of what happens here in terms of changing what I'm doing, because I will be seeking, I'll only run it for like.
And I, and I ask that question because as a board, as a body, one of our goals is to make sure that we're providing the services and makes that our citizens.
Absolutely. And, and, and I think it's, it's difficult with the size of District Three to really get to know every, everyone. I mean, I, I know people from all walks of life. And, you know, obviously, the COVID affected, you know, getting out a little bit more. But I thoroughly plan to change that. This is a new foray for me, and I'm thoroughly embracing getting out into the community much more than I have.
Thank you. All right, Councilor, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
That's right. Uh, Councilor, just to kind of give you a heads up, Council tonight is basically doing interviews and questions. The goal is to make a decision next Monday, so someone will be in touch.
Absolutely, all right, thank you for your time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You can have Jesse Brunson. Brunson?
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Brunson, you can go right behind the podium there, sir. And if you're comfortable, if you could maybe remove your mask so we can make sure we hear you clearly. And the format of tonight's meeting will allot it three minutes for each candidate to kind of make introductions and talk about things that are important to you that led to your application of this, for this position. And then the council will be followed by a question from council members that they so choose. So, for George, sir.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, too. Thank you for this opportunity to come and meet with you and to share my thoughts on the opportunity to serve on the City Council of Fayetteville. Let me just say a, a word about who I am. I am a retired United Methodist pastor. We moved here in 1987, 97, excuse me, for me to pastor John Weston United Methodist Church. Why do I want to serve on City Council? As I said, I've been here since 1997 and seen the progress of Fayetteville. I have noticed the great changes that have been made. But yet, there are some things that tend to trouble me a little bit. One of those things is homelessness. I've seen homelessness in other cities. I've lived in Raleigh, I've lived in Durham, I've lived in Orange County. And homelessness is an issue in all of those places. But I think as a city that we can probably do better with that issue, I'd like to help the City Council deal with that issue. The other concern I have is jobs. There are jobs here in Fayetteville. I think we can bring industry, more industry to Fayetteville. I would like to help the City Council do that. I have taught college, we have great colleges here. I would like to see us reach out and try to recruit students that are graduating from Fayetteville State and Methodist University, find a home here in Fayetteville. And I, I think the City Council can help do that, given the right opportunities. The district that I would be serving in has some of those colleges. Education is an issue, I would like to help us deal with that. Additionally, there are other areas that I think that I could help serve in, but I'm willing to work with Maricopa and the rest of the City Council to do whatever I can to move the city of Fayetteville forward.
Thank you, sir, appreciate, appreciate that. They have a question for you. Same question I've asked the others. How would, if you're appointed to District Three, how would your governance decisions be based on the city's strategic plan? Each year, we get together and, and have a plan of action. How, how do you think that plays into your governance ability?
Well, I, I would have to study that plan carefully and see how I can help implement that plan in terms of the district that I would be serving. I would have collaboration with you and the other City Council members to make sure whatever we did would be beneficial to the whole city. And, you know, I, I'm not a long ranger. I, I like working with people. And if given the opportunity, I would like to work with each councilperson to implement programs that you've decided on, that we've decided on.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. So you, you pretty much answered the priorities, homelessness, jobs, and education you mentioned that in Europe. So I have a question about your decision-making process. What governs your decision-making? Their decisions have to be made all the time on this board. What governs that for you?
As a person of faith, I always begin with prayer. I, I don't think I should, should not mention that, even though this is government. I think as a person of faith, that prayer should always enter into any decision I make. Also, I, I would get some feedback from the residents that, that are in that district. I don't think a person can make decisions for the welfare of people without having their input. And then, of course, having gathered input, then based on my research about the situation and hearing their input, then I would make a decision from what I gather, from my own knowledge and from the input of others. I don't know if I answered your question, but.
Yes, that's a pretty good statement, okay.
Councilman Herr?
Thank you, Mayor. You stated a little bit of what one of my questions was or is, and I thought I wasn't going to speak on it. But to reiterate, explain to us how important it is when we are, have concerns within our districts, when we have issues that we want to bring to the table. Not everything that we always talk about is, it's like globally, you know, city, there's some things that are right there. Tell me, reiterate, or tell me how important is it, you feel, to build relationships with your fellow colleagues in moving forward and getting things done? Not just, well, done in your district or citywide? Tell me the importance you think that is.
If I'm listening to your question right, you, you are asking, is it important to build relationships within the structure of the City Council? Is that?
100% correct.
That's quite important. Government cannot work unless people work together who have leadership in that city. Because I know you all are not going to agree with every person's thought process or decision, but consensus to me is important. You know, if we can get the vast majority to agree. And of course, I would be behind making sure that I'm reaching out to City Council members who I think would help facilitate whatever progress that I need to make in District Three. So building relationships is important. You remember, I'm a pastor, so I know about building relationships.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
I don't know if I answered your question, but.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, uh, Councilor, any other questions for Mr. Brunson?
Yes. Oh, Sam.
Uh, no, I was just saying, question for you, sir. All right, appreciate that, Reverend Brunson. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
You all have a great evening.
Madam Kirk, if you can ask Mr. Zimmerman?
Evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, sir.
So tonight's format, sir, is we've provided three minutes for each applicant to make remarks, introduce themselves, and, you know, speak on whatever you would like to speak on that led to the decision to apply to District Three. At conclusion of your remarks, council members will ask the question of...
Okay. For George, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, and good evening, council members, City Manager, Mr. Doug Hewitt, this City Attorney, Ms. Karen McDonald, and those on various media platforms. My name is John Zimmerman. I am obviously applying for the vacant position of District Three. And with the question in mind of why I should be the best choice in your decision this evening, I'd like to present you with some additional information to my application. My degree is, my bachelor's degree is in business administration. My master's degree is in project management. And as such, that enables me to be able to handle multiple tasks simultaneously. In addition to that, I'm also a Lean Six Sigma Black Belt. If you're like me, you probably think that has something to do with Raleigh. It does not. What that is, is process improvement. It helps to reduce waste through policies, being time and resources, how to streamline processes. And so with my education and experience with those degrees, I think I would be a valued asset to the council to assist in overall decision-making that pertains to the emergency choice project, as well as other projects within the city. I also have experience in the emergency services, such specifically as North Carolina paramedic. I'm also a volunteer, or have been a volunteer firefighter, currently a K-4C program instructor, to which I, back this summer, I instructed council members Ingram and thanks to Woffles family members who attended the CER program this summer. And I also owned an emergency preparedness store here locally focused on disaster planning and preparedness. And as many of you know, with the past disasters that Fayetteville's experienced, it's not a matter of if, it's when. And so I feel that my experience and expertise in this area will be instrumental in helping the city and the citizens of Fayetteville. The time my project management experience in with the emergency preparedness, I think that could be a huge asset specifically towards the stormwater challenges that are currently being faced. As a retired veteran, having traveled to many cities, both larger and smaller than Fayetteville, as well as experiencing this college and socially other than army installations, I feel I also bring knowledge and experience of what those areas were like, as well as what they have done for those communities. With that, little time in the question?
Thank you so much, sir. Yeah, a question for you. You have a lot of qualifications for management. How would you, your governance, if you're appointed to this position, how would your decisions on governance, the city's strategic plan play into your decision for governance in this position?
If a lot of time, I would take the issues back to the district and see what constitutes, constituents, how they feel about it. Time does not allow for that, then I would take what I feel to be the best interest for the district into account and vote accordingly.
Thank you. Councilman Wright?
Yes. Mr. Zimmerman, what would be your priority in what position of council? What would be your main priority that you would want to get done?
Honestly, sir, right now, at this point in time, because the current appointment timeframe is only for four months, my priority would be to learn as much about the City Council and the procedures, as well as policies, as much as possible. Outside of that, if you're actually looking for an answer with regards to what is currently in play, right now, I think it would have to be roads, the safety, crime and safety within the community. I know Yadkin Road specifically, Murchison Road, Bryant Boulevard, most of those have some repair issues that have been concerns of some of my neighbors. So the crime safety, as well as the safety of the roads, specifically the infrastructure.
Thank you.
Councilman Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Zimmerman, I heard you mention that you are having conversations with your neighbors and knowing some of their concerns. How involved are you or have you been with your local community crime watch community?
Well...
And if they have one, and if not, what is the importance of our crime watch, community watch groups to you?
The community crime watch groups are actually very important to me. One of the things that, once my wife and I, when we moved to Fayetteville and we became members of our neighborhood, we were very surprised and very enthused about the fact that Cotton Aid actually had a Cotton Aid Crime Watch Association. And we attended, I've attended every single meeting. That's how I became familiar with Ms. Waddell, some of the other policies with the Faith Fix It app, other assets and options and programs that were available to citizens. And that was phenomenal to me as far as my involvement, Cotton Aid over the last year due to COVID. We have not been able to meet in person. The members were not able to do it via Zoom. However, due to the business that I had, it was located in District Three, and the neighbors were able to come by and meet with me and talk with me. The Next Door app has been a big communications piece. We've used that to stay in touch and communicate, and that's how I've communicated with some of the neighbors that I'm not familiar with, as far as where they live, other areas of the district, such as over by the Murchison Road and Country Club area and those things. I just recently learned about the fact that the community meetings are on the city government page. So I intend to make as many meetings as I possibly can to learn more, as well as with the campaign that's getting ready to come up as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Abrams?
Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Zimmerman, for joining us here tonight. You recently talked about the important, well, you talked about the issues of infrastructure and public safety and our crime rates within the city. Have you already begun to have conversations with your potential constituency base and identify potential policies that would help better those issues?
I have spoke with some of the constituents with regards to their concern for the crime and safety. With regards to the policies, I have not been able to review them as of yet to be able to find out what could be done. I do know, I don't know specific details as to Yadkin Road specifically, but I do know that there has been conversations about crosswalks, some concerns with regards to speeding up and down Yadkin Road with the request and funding for a crosswalk. The neighbors have posted concern that rumor is that a divider is supposed to be placed in the middle of Yadkin Road. Don't know exactly how that's going to be safe. Don't even know if it's true, but I did let them know that as I found out, I would get back up in to let them know what would be done. Don't know if I'm answering your question either, but I hope I did.
Yes, sir. You've done, you've done just well. Thank you so much, Mr. Zimmerman. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Thank you, Woffles.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for attending today, what is evening. How often do you, if you do, how often do you watch our City Council meetings?
Oh, do I watch them? I have actually gone back to the last year and a half as far as in my spare time and watched them on YouTube. The ones, I honestly have not known about the schedules, but when I do catch them on YouTube or see that they've had them, it seems like over the last month and a half, or actually since probably about July, I've actually been able to catch them right as they've been posted on YouTube, and I've been able to watch them. I haven't watched them live. This is the first time I've been to a live council meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Councilman Woffles. Councilmember Kingston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of the questions that I had, it shows that you're self-employed. What about the scheduling itself with meetings because it's not a regular nine to five? Thank you.
Councilor, any other questions for Mr. Zimmerman? And Mr. Zimmerman, we appreciate the start. Format tonight again was basically just to speak with you and to ask our questions. The council plans to make a decision next Monday, so we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt. Thank you, Councilman.
Can you ask Ms. Kathy Gibson?
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting, I'm Mr. City Manager, City Attorney. An email from the mayor, I don't know, a month ago, said we'd actually vote tonight, but we're not legally bound to vote tonight, Mr. City Attorney. I don't want us to get out of lines with whatever the policy is. Maybe I need to find that email.
I think the discussion was that you would vote tonight so that the person could be sworn in at your next meeting.
Right. That's right.
I'll need to go back and find the email where, you know, clarify the calculations, but it's possible that you will need to vote and swear in the person next Monday to be within your timeframe.
It was November the 10th is when the mayor sent that out. The problem is I'm going to be out of town, and I may not be able to zoom in where I'm going to be with my grandchildren. That was a concern.
Thank you, Councilman Woffles.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure we're not live. Regent.
Good evening, everybody.
Well, welcome. Thanks for joining us this evening. So tonight, we'll open up, tell me, is it two or five, three minutes for each applicant to make statements, introduce yourself, and speak as to whatever drove you to apply for this position. And then at conclusion of your remarks, the council will ask questions if they have questions. So I'll give it to you.
Good evening. To the mayor and the City Council women, City Council men, I'm delighted to be here. I am Kathy Gibson. And you know from the information submitted that I have a two-time superintendent. Actually, I was the assistant superintendent here in Cumberland County for quite a few years. I've been a principal, a district office administrator, and a teacher. Presently, I am the CEO of my own business, K-4C International. I am a mother and a wife. I have a bachelor's degree from the University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill in English and a master's degree from UNC Pembroke in Educational Administration and a PhD from University of South Carolina in Columbia in Leadership Policies and Social Work. And all of these experiences and credentials facilitated my journey to where I am today. So do you want to ask, how does your journey prepare you or make you the best candidate to represent District Three? Well, I'm glad you asked. My journey has empowered me and molded me into a leader who is altruistic, responsive, and strong. Allow me to explain. Altruistic is the ability to put others before yourself. As a superintendent, I learned early on that all of the decisions had to be in the best interest of the students. Likewise, using counsel woman or counsel man understands that decisions have to be made in the best interest of your clients or clientele. In our community, we have homeless, the homeless, we have the absence of affordable homes, and that is all approached crisis level. I've lived in Fayetteville now over 20 years, and I know that there are a lot of great things going on in Fayetteville, but I also know that there are a lot of needs. And so I want the best for the city. I understand, as a seasoned leader, how to work with organizations such as the Board of Commissioners, such as the Board of Education, nonprofit organizations, for-profit organizations, et cetera, to pull down services for our people. I'm also responsive. As your leader, when the citizens call, I respond, and I mean that both figuratively and literally. I am nationally in touch. When teachers call me from California on a daily basis, I respond. I'm not afraid to take action and not afraid to take a risk.
Thanks so much, Mr. President. So did have a question for you.
Sure.
Thank you for that. I have quite an impression. You've had a lot of experience in government and leadership according to your testimony and remarks. How would your governance decisions, if you were appointed to the position of District Three representative, how would the decisions you make, how important is the city's strategic plan to that?
The strategic plan is essentially important. Number one, I would want to look at the needs assessment, because any good organization has an up-to-date needs assessment. And so you look at the needs assessment and the priorities, as well as the vision. All of my leadership has been based upon the vision and mission of the organization. If you refer back to the mission and vision of any organization, it helps you stay focused on what is best in decision-making.
Thank you. Councilman Wright?
Yes, Kathy Gibson. You've been in Fayetteville for quite a while.
I have been.
And seeing the conditions in the direction which would go in us to see, what would be your priority if you were to be selected in this position?
There are a lot of things going in the right direction. I see that we are reducing the crime rate, et cetera. I know that a lot of people say, well, look at the crime rate, but when you look at the statistics, there's going to change. Now, what would be my priority? I think I would be probably remiss to say what would be my priority right now, because it all goes back to the data. As a leader, you understand that you must look at the data and you must look at the needs according to the data, both quantitatively and qualitatively, before you decide the direction to take. So I look at the data. I'm not the kind of leader that just goes out and makes a decision because it's popular or because it's what I think people want me to do. I make decisions that are based upon data. And when decisions are grounded in data, then you can back them up in data. So I mean, I can go down the list of homeless, I can go down the fact that Fayetteville is about to pull down millions of dollars and all of that and, you know, orchestrating that. But 20 years from now, we want to look back and see what we've done and where the money has gone. And so therefore, a plan is absolutely necessary. You can't just jump forward and make decisions without a plan. Thank you for that question.
Kathy Gibson? Councilor, any other questions for Kathy Gibson? Councilman Davis?
Yes, Ken, can you please speak to your community watch involvement? You know, in that area of the city, it's such a close-knit community, District Three, One, Two, that center part. Can you, you've been here a long time, and we've done great work in the community. Ken, can you speak to some of the needs you see at the community watch level from your...
The community watch is a very... The the community watch is a very, um, important piece of data in terms of qualitative data and seeing what the people um, pursue or perceive as what the needs are. Um, I have an avid, um, visitor of the neighborhood, um. I guess we call it, um, like Facebook, and I hear from people, I'll I read what the people, um, say the needs are. But I think we need a greater organization that is based upon a maybe a, uh, a strategic plan. Um, we can watch all we want to, but what happens after we watch? Okay, we need to take it to the next step. And I am the I'm a doer, okay? I'm and you can look at my resume and you can see that, um, for forty-something years, I've been out there on the cutting edge. So I believe in doing, um, and I think that we can use some of the resources that we're pulling down, um, locally and from the state and make the community an even stronger place to be. I love living in Fayetteville. I'm dedicated to being here. My children went to school here. Um, you know, hey, there's something special about the diversity and opportunities that we have before us, particularly in in our history.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions, Council for that Kathy? All right, Kathy Gibson, we thank you so much.
I want to support questions.
I guess your answers were thorough enough to pick merit yet. Thank you for going.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Um, I look forward to hearing from you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we will, uh, the council will, uh, we have a meeting scheduled for the thirteenth where, uh, we we will make a decision, uh, and you'll be in touch, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam First, we can ask Mr. Keys. Uh, we have to refinish answer. Mrs. May, I want to answer Don's question. I think it is. Uh, Mr. Dalton, can you ask this doctor's question? I think about the statutory trauma.
Sorry, ma'am. What did you say?
Yeah, this doctor's had a, uh, asked a question earlier regarding the time and statute. He wanted to make sure that we were compliant with making this point that presented statutory requirements.
Yes, and I didn't. Right, and so I'm looking to try to, uh, find the original email from the city clerk which, uh, laid out the process, but in response to Councilmember Dalton's specific question, it was identified that you all would, uh, the person would be issued the oath of office at your, uh, December the thirteenth meeting. So unless, uh, I come up with something different, it appears that you would have to make the selection and then swear the person in at the next meeting. But I'm looking to confirm that. I'm sorry?
All of them would have to be here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can, um, Madam Attorney, we'll we'll take this.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Keith, good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Um, so, uh, to tonight, the format is, uh, we provide three minutes for each applicant to make remarks, uh, you know, any comments or or information you'd like to share with us that led to your decision, uh, to apply for a position in District Three. At the end of your remarks, uh, we'll open the floor for councilmembers to ask, uh, one question if they choose. So, floor to a second.
Uh, good evening. My name is Corinne Keys, and I'm interested in writing for Fayetteville City Council in District Three because I'm vested here. Twenty-two years as a business owner, um, I've been home here for thirty years. And I get it. I get it what, uh, council has to deal with. What council needs is a megaphone for the positive. There's so many. Everybody can walk in and tell you, oh, this is wrong, this is wrong. Has anybody talked about the twenty-five hundred jobs the council created? The two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars you put in the budget? The seventy-five million dollars that we talked about with Metro Man? You went from, uh, repairing streets every forty-six years to what, sixteen, seventeen years? Oh, yeah, by the way, you had COVID and a race rap and a rookie council in that. So there's this idea that we can tell council what they're doing wrong, but y'all done a pretty good job with the circumstances that you've had. And I feel that needs to be stated. As a business owner, I understand the Snickers effect. When I speak of the Snickers effect, here's what I'm talking about. There's a Snickers on the aisle that had to be delivered there. That aisle has to be cleaned. You know what? He got the mopping glow from A-one downtown. Oh, yeah, the guy that was, the guy that got the concrete contract for the, uh, parking deck over there? His guy worked over there and got the Snickers from there. He do it in the trash, the guy from Waste Management that happens to live there. So there's a truck that brought gas here. There's a truck that has a PCV valve that went to Ed's tires to get it tricked, get it fixed. All of that is part of our economy, and that's what I understand. I understand how the money is made and how to keep it here. The lumber, the steel, the concrete, every contract needs to be here. The money needs to be here. Like I said, I spend all of my time in business connecting people to the resources. When the city had a grant, I am yelling that to the stuff, to the rooftops of other business owners to tell them, go get this grant. I am the one telling still the small business sector, let's get together, let's find one bank that'll all this. So ten of us have good credit and three of us have shaky, make the bank take all thirteen of us. So I understand what council needs and the aspect of a family-type system. To where we argue behind the closed door, but when we go out, we we are one. I'm one of nine. I have eight sisters and I'm the only one. We do not always agree. But when we leave, we are united front. And so if we're talking about the various skill sets that each council person brings to the table and us telling the people, listen, it's been a lot more good that came out of this. That's the, I want to be a part of this team because I feel I actually think the team's pretty great. But if we let other people tell our narrative, then imagine somebody telling the narrative of a of a married couple of twenty-seven years. How many bad times have they had versus their good times? Whereas if somebody talks about the dexterity and the longevity, to make that happen. So I would like to be a part of this team because I feel it's a great team and I would be a great teammate.
Thank you, P. Uh, did have a question for you. Um, and if you're appointed to, uh, represent District Three by the council, uh, your decisions that you make, your governance, uh, how important is strategic plan, uh, to making those choices?
Strategic plan is everything. You have to take time. When I'm building a plan for my business, I'm looking at all eleven major streets in Fayetteville, the demographic, the socioeconomic of the cars that pass, five, four, thirty-eight, road system. Planning is everything.
Sir, Councilmember Davis?
Um, the main job, at least as I was taught by Bill Chris before, any elected official is public safety because no one wants to live, recreate, work in a place that feels unsafe. Our purpose is, our purpose is our is our job, do you believe, or councilmember's job is to ensure that the city is is safe? That we're investing in public safety.
Number one, but the way you do that with safety is jobs. We have two-hundred-and-eight-thousand people that live here, a hundred-and-forty-six-thousand employees and a hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand employees. City council created twenty-eight-hundred jobs. I would be like to be a part of a team and bring another six thousand to it to complete that. Unemployed society is definitely a less violent society. If we can look at the example of what Amazon does. Their crime is so low in the Amazon community, you can't even measure it.
Councilmember Davis, uh, uh, Councilman Wright, in here.
Pretty much answered the question for priority. Let me ask you a question one compromise. If you had to vote on something that you believe in, but you knew down the road the vote that you didn't really want to commit was greater in the long run, how would you view the long versus the short term in your voting? How would you view that as a city, as a whole? You would go to your constituents and and get what their concerns are and match that up with what the goal is. And so once you sit down with your constituents and say, okay, this is what we have, I'm a representative of them, not their own, not their king. So now when I sit down and go down, I I'm gonna sit with community leaders. I'm gonna look at the people and from all the way from Cottonade all the way to the the backside of Rambus Street. We're gonna sit down and get you get through this together. There is no independent decision-making from my point of view as a city councilperson with the people you represent.
Uh, Councilman, I'm here.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Keys, you made a statement of something that councils have spoken on since I have been on council, and that's about telling our story. You stated some things tonight that raised my eyebrows a little bit because you were telling our story on a lot of things that sometimes people, I guess they don't always hear. What, and then you mentioned this thing about the megaphone. What ideas would you be bringing to the table that would help the city tell their story?
I would like, once in, if I'm selected, I would like to find out what marketing tactics the city has. With a small budget of, let's say, twenty-four thousand a year, you could have Facebook, Instagram and Spectrum News. Spectrum News TV commercial is seventeen dollars per commercial. If you if you, if city council had a message to get out, then you would buy ten commercials every Monday and then literally maybe put it on ESPN or ESPN Two. Those commercials are cheapest twenty dollars a piece to keep people informed. The problem is that if you get the job done and nobody knows about it, you know, but you have the negative stuff where people have a big, a a a huge platform to get it off, then, you know, you're, that's where you have your imbalance.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Davis?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Is it my turn, sir? I think you, did you say Councilmember Davis or my name?
Good evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Keys, for joining us tonight. As it relates to, um, uh, the city's infrastructure in District Two, I'm sorry, District Three infrastructure, uh, can you share your views, um, and efforts to, uh, better the infrastructure or help better the infrastructure of the city within this body?
Three things in government that are very important is safety, infrastructure and economy. I would have to be appointed in District Three and given a dad on what what the needs of District Three would be like. I've, we did a fish fry in Tiffany Pines, and they said that they needed speed bumps in there. And so I want to, after doing my research, I found out that you have to, the fire department, Department of Transportation, there is just a there is a process that it takes to go in there. So the first thing I would do, Madam Ingram, was get some, get more information where I can make a better decision.
Thank you, Mr. Keys. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, council, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Keys? Is that, oh, Councilmember, thank you for the welcome.
Uh, yes, um, this question I ask a few other applicants. How, um, active are you in the community as far as community watching or just in the community as a whole?
The owner of WID, you told me years ago, if you spin the rec, you could spin the records backwards if you get the community involved. That is the essence of our business. We've not always been able to afford a billboard TV commercial. So community is how we built it. That is literally, somebody gave us a chance on a family reunion. Somebody, we we did two-hundred shirts that said family reunion, and somebody gave us the opportunity to fix it. So literally, the essence of what I have done for twenty-two years, Monday through Friday, nine to five, is community. I am responsible. When somebody needs a team sponsor, I am there. When somebody has a question, when somebody is on their way to the funeral home and they say, you know, my son just passed and we have no money for the T-shirts. That's literally from feeding, clothing, advising. I did an event Thursday that brought out three-hundred business owners. I showed them where the banks were. I told them to reapply for the SBA loans. I told them that the city has a program where the manager of it says, Corinne, tell your people about it because we want to run out of money. The city has various programs that are sitting there and that people just need a megaphone, just like I stated before. When y'all transferred the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over that was for the police to move in other neighborhoods, but the police didn't, the money sat there and then council got together, put it in the hands of C. C was able to give out the five-dollar number. Those are things that, that's community. I don't want to tell you, hey, go get your money for T. Well, I don't know if I'll be able to get out of it. Go fill your application out because small business sector, a lot of them are afraid. And so literally, I have been the catalyst for changing that situation and say, you missed every shot you don't take.
Thank you. Council, any other questions for Mr. Key? Please, we appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Uh, Madam Parker, if you can ask Mr. Mario Benevente? I don't know where you finish, or we want to discuss this after we hear all the candidates.
I think the mayor was saying after he's here on camera.
Yeah, we have, uh, Hey, Mr. Benevente, how are you, sir?
You're doing very well.
Good. So, uh, format tonight, uh, we provided each applicant, uh, three minutes to introduce themselves and how it is imagined to, to apply for the position. At the conclusion of your remarks, then the council members will ask a question if they choose to do it. Floor to a second.
Hey, Nick Olvin. Good evening. My name is Mario Benevente, and today I followed my candidacy for City Council District Three so I can earn the privilege of serving my community as an elected official. I'm also seeking an appointment to fill this seat's vacancy because I am the most effective advocate available to serve in this role immediately. I understand what the highest priorities for this body are because I watch every broadcast of these meetings any chance I can. My application reflects that effort because it is totally unique from the others in three crucial ways. Of the eleven applicants, I am the only one that discussed the current eviction crisis, which is the single most urgent problem facing vulnerable communities in District Three and across Fayetteville. I work every day to protect my clients from eviction through the civil litigation clinic at North Carolina Central. Because failing to address this crisis will create compound problems. Folks already struggling to make ends meet also can't afford the cost of securing new housing, which they can't even apply for now because of the eviction that's now under record. So while generic talk of economic growth is in almost every application, it's not a solution to this emergency problem. A rising tide can't lift you if you're without a boat and already drowning. We have to act now to save potentially thousands of our neighbors from being out on the streets this winter. Supporting an eviction appeals rights clinic is the first step in that solution. Or else we risk a rise in homelessness, another word and concept that only appears in my application. Now, almost every application cites public safety issues as a concern. But ultimately, FPD's latest quarterly report confirms that the vast majority of local crime is rooted in poverty. With people either desperate to avoid it or ready to do anything to get out of it. No one should think they need to sell contraband in order to survive. No one should feel they need to engage in violence to maintain reputation and authority. But the solution is not to target impoverished communities for mass incarceration. There are more effective and innovative strategies being implemented by next-generation leaders in the criminal justice field across the state and communities just like our own. Those communities are years ahead of us in part because they effectively recruited and retained their millennials. Once again, only under tab number eight will you find the word millennial or any discussion about the importance ushering in the next generation of civically engaged citizens who are passionate about serving others. Some policy examples include developing community home trust programs, support for co-op grocery store models as a way to end the food desert in the emergency room corridor, and proactive social work and restorative justice practices focused on healing our communities. If appointed, I could do even more to help put out these growing fires collaboratively with each of you. Because something totally unique about municipal government is that this work depends on dedicated community leaders who look past partisan politics in order to do what is truly in the best interest of our city. And that's getting the work of the people done. I hope that we can work together soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benevente. Um, did have a question for you. Um, if you were appointed to District Three to represent, uh, citizens in that particular area, uh, what do you think about the city strategic plan? How does the plan need to be designed?
Absolutely. I mean, the strategic strategic plan has been incredibly comprehensive. Uh, looking over it, you know, knowing that this happened pre-pandemic, uh, is the only place that I really see that there are room for improvement. Um, we should be prioritizing things like affordable housing in the context of the eviction crisis. We should be prioritizing, uh, some of our public safety issues again with relation to the way that the pandemic has heightened certain types of crimes while others have gone down. So for me, the strategic plan is comprehensive, it is effective, but there is a shifting of priority that does need to happen. And I think, as I mentioned previously, the eviction crisis is the number one priority that I want to highlight. And I think, as I mentioned previously, the eviction crisis is the number one priority that I want to highlight.
Sir. Uh, Councilmember, Councilmember here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir. Um, if you would, tell me how important it is for a person that is seeking office or an appointment, how important it is for that person to have a consistent voting record within that local municipality?
Certainly. So I know for myself, my voting record goes back to two thousand and eight, and I've been participating in elections every chance that I get. When it comes to the municipal elections, there is a level of focus, and I feel like knowledge that one should have to be able to participate in those. And so as a younger voter, uh, my time in Chapel Hill in college while I was still registered here in Fayetteville, you know, would sort of account for some of my, uh, missed municipal opportunities. Uh, but ever since I graduated and I got back to Fayetteville and I spent full-time sort of in downtown, becoming a bigger part of my community, uh, that happened in two thousand and eighteen. And so you'll see that reflected in my voting record, that the second that I became invested, the second that I got to know almost every single person in this room over these many years is when I started to participate fully in the municipal elections. Outside of that, I'm a bit of a politico. I enjoy, you know, uh, engaging with the national level of politics. So that's something I keep up with as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Kiss?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. One of the things, um, I wanted to ask about is the work, the work balance. Um, would there be any concerns with your work and then the schedule it requires for council?
I don't believe so. I have been watching exactly how this council operates when it comes to the work sessions, followed by the dinner meetings, followed by the full meetings, and then, of course, the committee work in between. Um, beyond that, I'm interested in being a community leader using the bully pulpit, as they say, of this role to go into my community and continue to work on issues even outside of just the legislative process. So, yes, city council is a part-time job. I'm ready to make it a full-time commitment. Uh, so that's something that I'm going to need, that I should do because of where I'm at with graduating from law school and being able to sort of be, uh, you know, hanging out my own shingle, as they say, starting my own business, uh, which is going to give me the kind of flexibility I need to prioritize this work. Uh, and that's my passion, is what I want to do with my life. And really, the law degree and some of these other things that I professionally are really just meant to be tools to better support my ability to do something like, uh, be a, a legislator in the council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Benevente, Benevente for being here with us tonight. I want to talk about, uh, your community involvement. Um, you seem to be, be very versed with community and very, uh, pertinent community issues that also directly relate to our strategic plan. Mr. Benevente, if you are appointed and or elected to, to represent District Three in the city of Fayetteville, um, wh- what are some ways you are, uh, prepared or have the skills to work with, um, eight other, I'm sorry, nine other members of this board and with differing appear, uh, opinions and such?
No, absolutely. I think that beyond any sort of, uh, differences in nuance, everyone in this room is a dedicated community leader. And I put that as the first way I define each of our city council members. Uh, with that in mind, I know that there's a lot of work to be done in our community. I know that everyone in this room understands that the Latina community in Fayetteville, the Asian American community in Fayetteville are areas that we want to address, uh, and give more attention to. And that's another, uh, space that I feel confident in being able to better broadcast everything that the city council is doing and to then receive all those needs so that we can better, uh, uh, provide for them. Um, I've done that already with the Justice for Our Neighbors group. We've had pop-up clinics specifically targeting certain communities. Uh, we know that a lot of business owners in this area, you know, um, myself, just coming from an immigrant family, we're all about understanding the, the need to pick yourself up and by the boost draft, starting a business, and wanting some support from your government as well. Uh, and, and that's, that's what you see on Yankee Road. That's what you see off of Santa Fe. Uh, those are areas in my district that I'm looking forward to engaging with more because those business owners deserve our support. Uh, because again, the Asian American community in Fayetteville has been here a while, and I think it's time that they got a voice, uh, within municipal government for the first time in the city's history.
Thank you, Mr. Benevente. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Wright?
Yes, um, Ben, Ben, Ben Te?
Yes, sir.
Um, this, uh, question of your priorities, if you get selected or voted into this seat, what would be your main priority as a council member of the city?
Absolutely, sir. So if you visit my website, mario.b.com, uh, the three priorities that I am, uh, focused on are, of course, public safety. But specifically, the way we address public safety, not through, uh, the typical means of depending on just a single department, but finding more innovative strategies so that we can better, uh, heal our communities after a lot of these, as we know, Biden shooting deaths that have happened. Uh, and there's much bigger, bigger effort that we can make proactively in that regard. Uh, secondly, I think a lot of this is going to come down to folks in my generation stepping up, getting engaged, putting their talents, their knowledge, and all of the passion they have for their new ideas, and trying them out here in Fayetteville. I think there's a lot of folks at Methodist, a lot of folks at FSU and FDCC that have the solution to a lot of the issues that we're facing. And of course, I mentioned this earlier, above all things, I think the eviction crisis is one that we need to address before anything else. It's something that people are being, as we've all heard at the last city council meeting in late November, folks are struggling. They're, they're sitting out of their cars. We've got folks that are in, on, in poor conditions in, 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 in long, extended stay hotels that just aren't sufficient, uh, to have, you know, single parents and their kids in. So that's the first thing we need to address. It's only going to get colder. I can't imagine seeing my neighbors out on the streets during the holidays. Uh, and there are ways for us to collaborate with the district attorney and court system to better protect our neighbors. So that's something that I wanted to prioritize. Public safety would be the next most important one. Making sure that my, my community steps in, that my generous support steps in, uh, to, to fill all that gap. We're going to solve a lot of problems together.
All right. Uh, any questions for Mr. Benevente? All right, CNN? Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Very much.
Uh, Madam Parker, if you can ask Ms., uh, Lisa Lane?
I had to do some paperwork on my desk. Chase me down the hall.
Thank you, sir. You're so kind.
I knew you had a stamp, I didn't know.
I'll go bring him over here. Ms. Lane?
I called everyone. I've got all closed meeting and she couldn't get in.
Okay, well, uh, well, thank you for joining us tonight. Each applicant is, uh, given total three minutes to make introductions, remarks, and, and share with the council, uh, whatever major things relevant to your legislative decision to apply for, uh, District Three appointment. Uh, at the conclusion of that, we'll open the floor. Councilmembers to ask a question if it, if so, so choose. So with that, I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Colvin, Mayor Proton Jensen, Councilmembers Hare, Dawkins, Wright, Kingston, Banks, McGlaughlin, Davis, and Ingram.
Hello.
Hello. I am honored and honored to offer myself a service to our great city as an appointee to this council for the seat vacated by a former council member from the district in which I resided for nearly twenty-four years. It is unfortunate that you are tasked with the duty of rather urgently selecting an appointee who can most readily be prepared to immediately work with each of you to address matters coming before the city council prior to the election. Fortunately, that person is standing before you now. While any of the city council member will certainly have a learning curve when beginning to serve, I submit to you that mine would be the least steep. Though my training and experience naturally positions me to transition seamlessly to perform the public service that each of you really perform so selflessly and so well, I have contacted the Institute of Government to inquire as to whether a replay or perhaps a PowerPoint printout of their city council training is available. They indicated that it will not be available until next spring, actually, until next, next May. As such, I believe this council will best be served by the person who has experiences that have prepared them, prepared me, for immediately entering public service. Further, I am familiar with the issues that come before you all due to my regular attendance of city council meetings and from other experiences. My resume, application responses, communications to you received from citizens who have engaged in civic and community service with me and who know me well demonstrate hopefully to you that I have the readiness, the ability, the interpersonal and communication skills necessary to effectively serve at this time. I believe you will find that I present with a certain genuine grace and decorum that are matched only by my tenacity and commitment to serve. My tenacity to get to serve is includes giving my time and strength generally in service. You will definitely find that I will work well with you in meetings as well as in your respective districts, supporting programs and efforts for sure. Some of you see me, and so hopefully already know. I really am a bridge builder. I believe we can accomplish more if we're able to work together. I have reviewed the current strategic plan for our city. Um, as I understood the council's application, you required of us to, to submit initiatives that we would like to see added. Um, I therefore suggested that the city work as a liaison between our police department and the county to address mental health. Two key issues or key issues addressed, um, by the first and foremost strategic plan include domestic violence, crime, and homelessness. I believe mental health is ultimately common denominator between the two. Caregivers and witnesses are oftentimes reluctant to contact law enforcement when there is a mental health crisis or related disturbance for fear of gasoline being thrown on fire.
Uh, uh, I think you're three minutes up.
I, we didn't know if that was a.
Yeah, that's right. I want to try to be fair. Um, I appreciate that. I think you kind of dovetailed into the question that I had in mind about strategic plan. If you are appointed to represent, uh, constituents of District Three, uh, how important is the city's strategic plan to your decision-making?
Here, ma'am. That answer your question, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, uh, council member here.
Thank you, Mayor, Mrs. Lane. If, if you are not selected for this appointment, will you still apply for City Council District Three?
Yes, I do.
Uh, Councilmember Davis?
Yes, um, you briefly touched on, um, the opportunity that you saw for council to work with county and the sheriff's department. Um, specifically, to what direct end, where would you like to see that in your mind, uh, take place? What results?
And I, I, as I contemplated, I realize that it's hardly a pretty lofty goal because there's certainly a subdivision between the two, but if we could work to sort of the liaison, making sure that the community understands what resources are available for them right within the city, um, and also working, um, through Chief Hawkins to make sure that there is some understanding that although our policemen are certainly not social workers, um, and they certainly are right now, um, obviously undersourced for a city outside, um, they need to understand that there is some sensitivity. There's sensitivity trained that already is in place. We know that. But I, we know that, but I don't know that the active citizen, that, that right to help everyone. Does that answer your question, council?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Uh, Councilmember, any questions for Ms. Lane? All right, Ms. Lane, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you for it.
And really thank you all for all the work that you did.
And you as well. And, uh, the council will look to make a, uh, decision on next Monday, at next Monday night's meeting on the thirteenth. So we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you.
All right. Madam Parker, if you can ask Mr. Mike Dawes?
Yeah, man, you ought to get you a stamp.
So, one of my colleagues, that's my finest ear. Good evening, Mr. Dawes.
Evening.
Um, so, uh, format tonight, sir, uh, three minutes has been allotted for each applicant to, uh, make remarks. Anything you think is relevant for the council to, uh, to hear regarding your interest in, in this appointment. And at the conclusion of any remarks, uh, we'll open the floor for questions from the council. So with that, I'll give you the floor, sir.
Great. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you, city council members. I'm Mike Dawes, originally from, uh, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Uh, came here, uh, to Fayetteville in nineteen eighty-four is, is what the, uh, military. Been mayor for thirty-eight years, have, uh, to the same person. Uh, have two children and, uh, three grandchildren. Obviously enough, we live in Compnade, and we all have houses next to each other. Uh, one across the street, which I call it the Devil's Triangle because we share the grandkids, uh, with everyone. I spent thirty years in the military, eight years DOD, have MBA, uh, project management certificates, and black belts, uh, six signal. Black belt does not relate to karate. It relates to process improvement. But my two thirteen-year-olds both earned their black belt degrees this past year, so that's a si- uh, significant thing. I worked at Special Warfare Center. Uh, I developed performance and behavioral, uh, system. Uh, I perform analysis for special forces, um, and administrate many data platforms. But what made me, uh, come here and relevant to, uh, the, the city was during a tornado in, in twenty-eleven, uh, when it devastated my neighborhood, took out roofs on my house, had to deal with, uh, code enforcement. Fayette Fix-It was non-existent. Uh, had to take pictures, get signed for so on and so forth. And with that being said, I was actually the first person to be interviewed for Fayette Fix-It and how it worked and made it better. Still, one of the largest communities, uh, in the city, Compnade, where we actually fill a church, uh, and standing room only, using, uh, my expertise with analytics, making relevant, uh, presentations of what's happening in the neighborhood. And it made it, made them buy into the neighborhood, which is pretty important. And I think what we're kind of missing right now, we have to get back to, uh, community. I, um, was a part of the Fayetteville Citizens Academy, uh, which was a very good course. Fayetteville Citizens Police Academy, which was outstanding. And I told people to be a part of that. It was probably, uh, one of the best, uh, courses I've been a part of. It really said a lot for our police department. I actually ran against Mayor Mitch Colvin and Tisha Wyndell in District Three. It was a great experience. He wiped the floor with me, but hey, I'm still here, uh, living too. I'm a very goal-oriented person, and I put all my, my goals for the city, uh, as smart ideas and making them smarter. And I say smart because priority, safety, and security for all, regardless of income. I think that's, that's very important, and we'll dive down if you want to do that. Making sure that youth have a better, uh, opportunity than a generation before them. Um, I actually worked with that, with Man the Church, with many, uh, youth programs, bring it, uh, together. And I have strategies for that. The ability to provide for families. I think that this city council has actually been doing a great job. We just have to steer this enormous growth in a direction because we have something. analytics team to bring it all together, to make that relevant and package it in such a way that's aligned with your goals as, as a city council, and you make decisions based on that. Now, you have sister cities and so on and so forth, you can look. Initially, I would tell you I was against the Secret Stadium, but what, what has happened with that has been a good, good thing for the city, along with other decisions. I think just with the enormous growth that we have in this city, it just has to be steered, property values are doubling, it's a great place to be. We just have to change that, that old mantra of Fayetteville, and I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud with the people that are around.
Sir, Councilmember here, and then Wright.
Thank you, sir. You are one of the second members of candidates that are speaking on some great things that are going on in our city, and I'd love to hear that. If you would, tell me the importance that you think it is for a council member to build relationships with their colleagues. How important is that to you?
Well, I think it's very important, and I think that's my strength. With special forces course that I do and administrate, I deal with team building, that's all I do. My job, if I were to be selected as council, is not to fight, not to bicker. Everyone can have their, their say, but it's, our goal should be the goal of the city that should, that is identified. We have to get there together, you can't onesie-twosie. And I will tell you that I am not a person that talks behind people's backs. If I have something against a person, I will be direct, because it involves me and you and nobody else, and I think that's important. It's, it's also important when, when it goes into project management, you work through a storming stage. If you stay in that storming stage, you are lost, and you will never get to the goal which you're trying to achieve.
Thank you, sir, for that answer. Thank you, Mayor. All right, Councilwoman Wright.
Yes, so priority. You've chosen or selected for this position and eventually voted in as council. What would be your priority as city councilman, as you see the direction the city is going at this point?
I think it's important first to, to have the, the citizens and communities feel safe and secure, and that takes transparency across every agency. I also believe with that being said, I always hear, you know, bickering and issues about kids walking down the street. Well, where are the kids going to walk if they got no place to walk to? You have to have youth programs, youth hiring programs. We have such a great structure with Methodist and FSCU and Fayette Tech, working with our public schools. In Milwaukee, I went to a, a technical high school. My freshman year, I got to pick plumbing, electrical, carpentry, whatever. I chose to be a plumber and then go in the army, but that's irrelevant. But I have been in Fayette Tech and took many courses just to help in a side business of home building and flipping. While I was taking the HVAC course in Fayetteville Tech, they were hiring out of the classroom, hiring out of the classroom. You get a person to use the education facilities that we have here, get them into some job or work program, get them in and then figure it out. From figuring out, then they go to Methodist, then they go to FSU to grow, to be business managers, great people in the community. I just think that is a place that, that we can't go wrong. That's, that's invested in our youth.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wright. You have a question for Mr. Dobbs? Councilmember Kinsley.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Dobbs, can you tell me if you're planning on running for the district seat in the upcoming election?
I'm definitely wanting, my idea.
Can you tell me if you're planning on running for the district seat in the upcoming election?
Um, I, I think it, it all depends. If I can make a change, I'm not going to waste anyone's time. If I can't work together with others, I'm not going to waste anyone's time. I've seen a lot of good candidates and sitting in the, the heat box waiting to come in here. Got, got to talk with a lot of good folks, and I think we're in good hands. What makes me, I think, a great candidate is I'm a community builder, I'm proven, I've done many things without anybody, I've exceeded on everything that I went out to do, and I'm just an asset and not a liability, and that's what I want to be. I don't want to be a liability to anything. I want to be an asset to the city, and that's what makes me a great candidate.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mr. Dobbs, I see in your, your profile, and I want to make sure I'm correct when I say this, you stated that you, you ran for Fayetteville City Council District Three, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, following your, your race, what were some efforts you, you, you did to ensure that you stayed connected with the community?
Well, my, my connection with my community, well, first thing, when I ran, I learned how diversified and strange District Three is. You, you really have to understand, because I would go across the street and be insulted. So when we built communities and I was going through the Donut Hole and all the way down towards FSU and Helen, there are some forgotten communities, and there's our, our people looking for help. And what I, I took out of that, I learned a lot, uh, running against the, the now mayor, and it was actually pretty enjoyable. But during my effort of running for District Three, I visited the Art Center, the, I mean, you name it, I was around and I found out what a true great city that we had. We just have to massage it and get it right. Hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council, any other questions for Mr. Dobbs? All right, Mr. Dobbs, we appreciate it, it's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Drink a lot of coffee. All right, thank you. Uh, all right, and another question you can ask, Mr. Raymond Makar.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, sir, hello today.
Well, yeah. So, Mr. Make, if you could, if you feel comfortable enough, if you could take your mask off so we can kind of understand one another, and also tonight, the night format, provided three minutes for each applicant or candidate to introduce themselves to the council, as well as give us any information about yourself that you think should be considered. At the conclusion of your remarks, we will open the floor for council questions. So with that, I'll give you the floor, sir.
Well, thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, council, my name is Ray Makar, basically been in Fayetteville, North Carolina since 82, 1982, it's been some time. Most part, my wife and family have been in the Cottonade community, going through the ebb and flow of the security and the watch, community watch program. We've built it quite a few times, and we try to basically provide a safer, more secure environment in the neighborhood. With that, I do have just a quick background. I have 24 years in the military, of which about 19 to 20 years are with special forces. From a deployment standpoint, we've been deployed quite a few years, leaving my, my hotel six, I call her, my wife and the kids, while we went to Gallivan. With that, I've been subsequently elicited by ForceCon P2, which is an intel cell, and my focus, my, my strongest student, I'm the program manager for identity intelligence, anything from lint and prints to lab work to algorithms, gates, things of that nature. Heavy coordination with law enforcement, which is a good thing, and it's a lot of architectural pieces in order to put together that information to actually validate that personality. That's the whole goal between my forte or in my forte. We do provide service, ForceCon does provide service in a sense of supporting all the cores, continental US and elements in DOT, elements in headquarters outside the continental US. We do support, train, man, equip, we understand, and we have adopted quite a few policies in order to facilitate, better facilitate, the soldiers on the ground with kit, with equipment, and with resources that they will need. With that, I yield back to you, sir, for any other question.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, thank you for joining us tonight. So, if you are selected by the council to represent District Three, city's strategic plan, how important is that to you in your governance decisions?
Well, it is, it's very important. What basically had gotten my family or myself and my family down here, we are, we've been in Cottonade for quite a bit of time, most of the time as time we've been here in Fort Bragg. And with that, there's, again, there are strong leadership traits that people have, there's a lot of talent out there within the community. The Cottonade community does have quite a few, quite, quite a few talented people that can be, once again, put together for and associated for to provide a safe and secure neighborhoods.
Thank you, sir. Um, council, any other questions? For Mr. Raymond Make, Councilmember Kinsley.
Yes, thank you. Um, one of the questions I would just like to ask is, is it your intentions to fall to run for the district seat?
Yes, ma'am, yes, I will.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kinsley, have a question for Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Davis?
Um, sir, one, one of the main, and I know you highlighted your, some security, um, while it's basing as an objective, what actions do you believe, if, as a part of council, you would like to see taken in terms of security, crime, safety, what from your assessment across the city of Fayetteville?
It's a great question, it really is, but it, it's quite a holistic response, in that we do work from a network, from an architecture standpoint, physically on ECPs at Fort Bragg, and with that is that little proverbial chip of all your information that's on it. With that, that validates and basically identifies you as who you are in the picture and so on and so forth. With that, can the city go to that? Throughout the continental US, we're already moving in that aspect, from airports specifically, screening cells, screening walls, screening security. With that, your information is basically passed in a very quick way to basically identify and validate your personality. If that answers your question, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Mayor? All right, sorry to say it now, we appreciate you joining us.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
Is more meatloaf coming, the wife just made meatloaf.
All right, council, with that, we've concluded interviews with the 11 applicants, so that, look for motion during the special meeting. We do have.
Mayor. We have a closed session as well.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, you said you wanted to talk about the appointment timeline?
Yes.
Yes.
So as I read your policy, and I thank former councilmember Mo for his current.
Legal opinion?
His opinion as well, but your policy says that the person has to be selected, so you could select that person on Monday. The council, it does not say that they have to be sworn in, so my interpretation would be that council is within its purview to make that selection on Monday. Certainly, if the council wants to have the clerk swear the man they could, clerk could certainly do that on Tuesday. There is no requirement that the person be sworn in in 30 days. It says select.
All right, thank you for that. All right, council, with that, we'll ask for motion to go into closed session. Uh, Councilmember Ingram, you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I, I wanted to ask, since we are planning to make a selection, and I know councilmember Dawkins said he would not be here. Madam attorney, you mentioned Tuesday, what is this, what, what was, what's special about Tuesday?
No, ma'am, I was simply saying the person could be selected on Monday, but they could be sworn in on Tuesday if the council so decided.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, do we need to make formal action to decide how we want to do that? If we want to swear a man on Monday and select, or at their leisure on the next day to be sworn in? So there's some full understanding and clarity.
Question for council, if you'd like to entertain that at this time, in terms of selection, we understand based on the attorney's wording and interpretation, if that needs to happen by Monday, to stay compliant, but swearing in could be the following day or the same day. Council, do you have a preference? Would you like to do it the same day? A lot of times when you're sworn in, I think people want to bring their families because it's a special occasion and, yeah, so I'm okay with doing Tuesday person.
So, question for me would be councilmember Dawkins' absence. If he's not going to be in town, how would we handle that? Would he have an excuse, absence, and he does not, his vote does not count, or how would, how do, how would we handle that at this point if he's not going to be?
He never comes to the meeting.
I'm, I'm talking to the city attorney.
Okay.
Well, if he doesn't come to the meeting, then just, just vote that counts.
Just want to make it.
Call in. I'm going to try being Jamaican, hoping. I'll phone him, we'll find.
You can call in, right. In the county's purview.
Seven.
Or now their wifi's counted, but I'll try to call.
All right, so, sounds good. So, council, just to make sure we're understanding, there consists that swearing in can take place the following day, just to allow the new appointed council member to bring family if they chose to do it.
So move that the selection be on Monday and here that the swearing invitation of the vote be on Tuesday, that would give the new council member time to bring it back.
All right, this was much on forward by Councilmember here, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any further discussion?
Yeah, the question would be that if we're going to do that Monday, then all the candidates would have to come back.
I think that's why the, why councilmember here made his motion that the person would be sworn in on Tuesday, to allow for. be sworn in on Tuesday, to allow for...
I'm talking about Monday.
Well, it's available by phone. It's be notified then. That's, that's...
That's like you made an appointment, you received it, candidates want.
Okay, so the, they don't necessarily, none of them necessarily have to be.
Correct.
They don't necessarily have to be on the phone or Zoom.
The clerk will notify them.
Because they're doing the actual selecting, so, okay, good.
Any other question?
They'll be watching.
They'll be watching.
So, so is the motion on the floor by Councilmember Hare, seconded by Councilmember Wright? Had discussion, those in favor, Tuesday swearing in, show of hand. All right, Councilmember Ingram and Mayor Protim?
Green. Green.
You can...
I don't think it's just a...
What's going on? First in the yard before we take a break.
Yeah. And I want to talk to you about the council on this work session. I'll speak to the manager while we break and see if, if somebody's added an action items.
Okay.
All right, so we are back...
Tell the public.
They can hear us outside.
Yeah.
But yes.
All right, we are back into open session. Looking for a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
So be it.
All right, adjourn, and we will come back at 8:00 and begin the work session.